Okay. Good evening. This is our November 30th special called meeting. We're going to open with Mr. Wilson, leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance, and then Superintendent Sale is going to lead us in our prayer.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Father, I do thank you for this day. Even though our days started with tragedy and grief, and our hearts are still feeling that at the loss of Blake Lance in this tragic circumstance. But I am thankful, God, that you are big enough to handle all of our grief, to give comfort where it's needed, and to bring the help that's needed to that family and to others that are struggling. And so we come to you tonight and we ask for your help. We ask that you would please provide what is needed for the Lance family, for others who are ill, for those who are grieving themselves because of the loss of loved ones. We also pray for our country and our community. Guide us, Lord, and direct us so that we can do what is best according to your will. And also, Father, I ask that you would guide this meeting tonight, be with this group of individuals as they try to do what is absolutely best for the students in Swain County. We thank you for those things and we trust you with them. We pray those through the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. So go ahead and call our meeting to order.
Ms. Burns, I have no additions to the agenda unless some of you have additions.
Does anybody have anything to add to our agenda? No, I think we're good to go then.
As has been our tradition for the past fifty years. It just seems like it's been that long, doesn't it?
It feels like it.
Allison Cochran is going to come and to speak to us about what's going on in Swain County, and she is absolutely one of the bright spots of our meeting. So Allison, thank you for being here so much.
Well, thank you. Good evening. Each of you should have the handouts. We're going to go on down to Swain County. Total test, seven thousand seven hundred and sixty-four. There are seven thousand three hundred and ten negative tests currently from March, four hundred and sixteen positives. Active cases right now are thirty-seven. Fatalities or deceased are five. Our positivity rate right now is five point four percent. That is up from the first of November, which was five point two. Case fatality rate is one point two. That has dropped. It was one point five, so that is great significance right there. Just wanted to point out, of the thirty-seven active cases, with that, five of those, we have not been able to determine if they're linked to anybody. The rest of them have been linked to a previous positive. So thirty-two cases have been linked. With that, there are three new from zero to seventeen. There's one infant and two school-aged children. On the back, Graham County has reported two hundred and seventy-three positives. They have a five point nine percent positive rate. They have five active cases. Macon County and Jackson County, I was not able to get their information before the meeting, but I got it just a minute ago. So in Macon County, positives, they have nine hundred and forty-two, with eight point four percent positive. They have nine deceased, sixty-six active cases. Clay County, they've, just to go over that, it's three hundred and thirty-five positives, six deceased, and sixteen active cases. Cherokee County, they updated it this evening and I was able to get it as well. Positives, nine hundred and fifty-two. They're still at an eleven percent, still at twenty-one deceased. So they have forty-five active cases. Jackson County, positives, one thousand four hundred and thirteen. Ten deceased. There are fifty-eight active positives in Jackson County. If you look at the graph below, this is a new graph. We started with this this afternoon. You may have seen it on our Facebook page. What it shows is the positives since March, the ones that recovered, the thirty-seven active cases, the five deaths. And then so since November twenty-fifth of last week, we've had zero deaths since then, but we've had fifteen positives since the twenty-fifth. I believe on the Facebook page, it reads since November thirtieth. That is a mistake. It is the twenty-fifth. The new system, the code, the county alert system that was released last, I guess it's been over a week now. This wonderful graph, I'm sure you've seen it on the news. We're red. Basically, what that means is, within the past fourteen days, we've had at least forty-two new cases, is what that means. So if you're in the orange, you've had at least twenty-one cases. We were in that, then we jumped up.
So no matter your population?
No matter your population.
Okay.
That's one of the requirements. But it is based on a population of one hundred thousand. So that doesn't help us as well. It goes off that, and then it goes off of the number of new cases within fourteen days.
So red means forty-two or more?
Yes.
New cases?
Orange is twenty-one. From twenty-one, I guess, to forty-one. And then the only other thing is, people keep asking me about North Carolina as a whole, what the positivity rate is. So I looked at that roughly, what Google says. There's ten point five million North Carolinians. And with that, with the positive being three hundred and sixty-four thousand five hundred and twelve, that's a positivity rate of three point five percent in North Carolina.
Someone is going to ask the question, then why do we hear a different positivity rate coming from the governor sometimes?
That's within the past two weeks. They report that within the two-week timeframe, or the day of. So that's what they look at.
Okay, thank you.
So the three point five is overall, from beginning to now?
Beginning till now.
Do you have an idea what's wrong with the last uptick?
Churches and family. Churches and family. That's how those thirty-two are connected. It is very easy to connect those.
So it doesn't anything to do with the pandemic?
No, sir.
That's what we keep here.
That's what you keep here. Now, since March, we've had a few cases from employees, just like we have from the county, the school, and everywhere else. But it is not significant by any means, no.
Is the CDC is going to modify the quarantine?
Yes, I have read that. They're looking at modifying the quarantine, which is if you are in contact with someone, not that you are sick, but that you've been in contact, from fourteen days supposedly to seven days. They've not officially announced that. And of course, North Carolina will have to adopt that, so.
If North Carolina adopts it, will you adopt it, or?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Yeah, we will go with what the state says.
Do you have much information on the shots about getting into a small rural community here?
Once the vaccine is available, it will be shipped to all of the counties in North Carolina. I do not know how much we will receive from the first shipment. As I understand it, there will be two doses. It will first go, of course, to first responders, medical staff, those sixty-five and years older, such as that. Nursing homes, things of that nature. And then it goes with the tier system with what we have left, and then what our next shipments would be. Like the second, like the second tier would be school personnel. So they would be after first responders, basically.
Will it be administered by Walgreens, since they're part of that, or?
At this time, it will just go to the health departments. But that could change.
So it may need to be old.
There is maybe.
Yeah, I'm over sixty-five too.
You thought it was, you thought it was luck only, didn't you?
I mean, it may go to the different drugstores that, but I think that first shipment, such as that, it'll probably come straight to the health departments for them to divvy out to the first responders in the county.
When did you say that could possibly, you have any idea?
I'm going to say January.
That'd be great.
It might be sooner, but January. We're working on the, on the plan right now. We've got to determine, we've got to call into the state to figure out if EBCI is getting their own shipment, or if that shipment will go to the different counties, and then we allot so much to EBCI. I believe they will get their own shipment. And then we have to look at, like I said, you know, the nursing home, Preston City Living Center, such as places that, jail, figure out how many would like the vaccine.
Will all, like, frontline health workers be required to take it, or is it going to be just an optional?
It, it probably depends on what the work, the employer says. At the health department, it is not a requirement. Vaccines are not, excuse me, are not a requirement.
Highly recommended.
Highly recommended.
Highly recommended.
But it would depend on the employer and what their policy would be.
Probably the same as a flu, whatever the requirements are for flus.
Yes. Some, some health departments do require flu vaccines. It's a requirement. Swain County does not.
So I guess the question that we have asked every two weeks now is, are you still comfortable with us continuing in this, within the school system the way we are now?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I am. The, we've not, we've had a few cases here and there. Very few contacts, if any. The school's been great about maintaining the six feet and wearing the mask, which is the key, the six feet, for sure, and the mask.
Okay, great. Any other questions or comments from anybody else?
I've got one comment, just regarding our system. I watched the Murphy volleyball game, and I noticed they're just throwing the ball around, back and forth, back and forth. And I talked to my daughter, and she went over there to keep score, I think, or do something. And she said, they didn't even check you when you came in. And that just swelled my heart with pride for how much effort our administrative staff here, from the superintendent down to Neil and Sonya at the high school, because at the high school, I went up there and saw that last game, maybe. I substituted for one of the parents. And it was strict, and the ball was washed every time it changed hands. That is appreciated. That's class.
A lot of that goes straight to Neil. Because he has been so serious about taking care of our students. Because I know he wants to get the seasons in, but he cares about people. And he has done a phenomenal job of making sure that happens.
He goes in that detail, but I think it's system-wide too. Because I think you and your staff have done that all the way down. And with Allison here, I think we've just done it right. And it's paying off, I hope. So I'm very pleased with it.
I think we've done a really good job in the county. I mean, our numbers are high right now with thirty-seven active cases. They have been higher. I do expect them to get higher, especially since Thanksgiving. We're going to go into Christmas. It's flu season. There's no telling what's going to happen.
True.
We've still got a month to go in twenty-twenty.
Well, again, Allison, thank you. Thank you for the data and for just giving us good, solid information that helps us make decisions.
You're welcome.
So it's very appreciated, very much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. From the school system, I shared quite a bit of data with you last week. A lot of that data is still accurate. However, since last Thursday, of course, there's been an opportunity for more people to be exposed and to have symptoms. So right now, since last Thursday, we have had twelve students who have presented symptoms or have, they've told us that they have been close contacts somehow. And only one of those has tested positive. And now there are, there may be others that are awaiting test results, and I wouldn't be surprised by that. But the numbers that I gave you last week are a little bit higher now. That brings us to a total of sixteen positive students since August the seventeenth. And I think that that is, that's worth noting. And there's been no sharing of the virus from students to anyone else that we know of. We have eight staff members right now that are out. And there may be a few more that are still finishing up quarantines from close contacts or perhaps symptoms. Usually with our staff, it's close contact. But they're very quick to pay attention to who they've been around, and they let us know, and they don't come to work. So we've had eight staff, and two of those are positive. We've actually only had one additional positive since last Thursday. Because I've counted one of our teachers in there who I need to report to you is in the hospital right now. She's been in the hospital for three or four days. It is COVID-related. But she is beginning to do better. And of course, we'll be available to help her however she needs help. But that is the first individual on staff that has had an illness to that level, okay? So I wanted to bring your numbers up to date on that, okay? Any questions? Neil Blankenship must not know that we have a board meeting right now because he's calling me.
Go ahead and talk to him.
No. It'll, he can wait. I'll call him when it's over. Our, our counselors are here today. Brandon Sutton is not able to be here because he's been a close contact. And he has been sequestered to his bedroom and bathroom.
Oh, wow.
And he is just about to go stir crazy. So the counselors have come to, to tell you about what their plans are as, as counseling team. I don't know that we've ever shared that with you.
No, this is great.
So I think this is a good opportunity for you to hear what they're doing, since we're in a, a position right now where the social, emotional concerns for our students is probably higher than it's ever been. Or at least in a long time. So, Ms. Sneed, you're in charge.
So I believe in your packets are the comprehensive school counseling plans from each of the schools for you to look over. If you have any questions, we're here for you. These plans help to create a comprehensive school counseling program which aims to support all students in terms of maximizing opportunities for academic achievement, ensuring mental health, reinforcing healthy emotional choices, and advocating for students in general. The school counseling plan itself may vary at each school, but it's data-driven and contains objectives and action steps to reach whatever the program goals are. And each of our schools have kind of have their own plan, so to speak, and they all look a little different. But we all wanted to speak a little about, about each of our plan. And I think Ian's going to talk a little bit about the high school plan.
Up or down?
You can, I think you're up.
All right. How are y'all doing this evening?
Good.
All right, just to speak briefly to the high school comprehensive plan. Our comprehensive school counseling program at Swain County High School is an essential component of the instructional program, which you all have been provided a copy of. It is utilized as the template to reach all students to support their academic success, career development, and social, emotional development. It is a planned, purposeful, and sequential program that begins with their entry into high school as a freshman and continues through their senior year. Our program is data-informed by student needs and provides outcome-based accountability measures that align the school counseling program with Swain County High School's overall academic mission to graduate students who are prepared to be successful in the world of work or at an institution of higher learning upon graduation. We strive to engage our students, family members, and community stakeholders in an effort to forge positive relationships to best serve the needs of all children. We are advocates for the children we serve and strive to remove barriers to success and mitigate any circumstances that might otherwise put our students at a disadvantage to their peers. As of today, our counseling program at the high school has had over fifteen hundred direct contacts with students, parents, and third-party agencies this school year. That includes individual counseling with students, small group meetings with students, parent conferences, two-way communication with parents through phone calls, emails, and texts, as well as communication with other agencies such as DSS or Appalachian Counseling. One of the key components we would like to highlight of the counseling program at the high school is our care team. And I'm going to ask Barb to speak a little bit about that.
I love talking about care team because it's kind of our little baby at the high school that we really have developed over the past few years. And it consists of both of us as school counselors, but it also consists of our school nurse, our Native American coordinator, our school social worker. And then also, typically, our career development coordinator is within our care team. This year, she's kind of serving in a different role as she's teaching one of the career management classes for the teacher, for the CT department. But we just, we really work as a team. We meet every week. We log our contacts. Ian is the best at that on the team by far. And we just, we really approach it as a collaboration with students and their families. And when things go on, we, we kind of take it as a little family, and we figure out how to approach whatever comes up, such as the situation this morning that we've kind of worked with today. So we just, we really can't say enough about the teamwork component because it definitely isn't myself or Ian, or just Ian and myself. It is so much of a team approach. So we just wanted to highlight that for you guys because it's definitely not just us. Think one of the other.
So I wanted to share a little bit with y'all tonight about our plan for the middle school. My program goal is to keep students connected to educators and classmates in ways that enhance their well-being during the remote learning. Have several goals, but this one has been a primary goal that we've talked about this year for all of our students. The ASCA national model has four components. The foundation, management, delivery, and accountability. Most of my time is based upon the delivery, which is indirect and direct services. Direct services include core curriculum, student planning, and responsive services, and of course, individual counseling, which I do a lot of. This year, I've worked with the classroom teachers on developing the social, emotional learning classroom lessons. So each teacher can use that with their class during their flex time. And wanted to go over the referral process. I have a teacher referral process and a student referral process, which they can come to my office to fill out forms, or they can do that digitally, you know, to get in touch with me. Indirect is also part of the delivering method, which is referrals outside agencies for additional assistance, consultation, and collaboration with parents, teachers, and communities, which we have a wonderful community. And like Barbara said, we all help each other. Even the counselors, we communicate all the time because, you know, we have to have each other. Along with that, I want to speak about the virtual learning world which we're in now that none of us has prepared for, but we're just trying to work our way through it. At the middle school, we have a third of each of our student population that's on AB or C schedule. I send out weekly motivational quotes, each teacher via email, and I've created a Google Council Classroom, Council Classroom, which I do guidance lessons and community mental health resources, and try to check in with the students at least once a week, which are our virtual students. A lot of our time is spent with those direct students on campus. The last part of the national model is accountability, and that's the effectiveness of the program through data. So at the beginning of the year, I sent out a coping with COVID survey to parents, teachers, and staff. Of the parents, I got seventy-five responses. The teachers, I got nineteen responses. And the students, I got two hundred and seventy-eight responses. Which is not, you know, many, but it's the start. So at the end of the school year, I hope to send out, this is a pre-test. I hope to send out a post-test at the end so I can, you know, get my data with that. But out of these responses, the two hundred and seventy-eight from the students, one of the questions was, what kind of, did you have a hard time during this pandemic? And twenty-three of the kids said that they did, and they had a difficulty time with anxiety and stress. So basically, of these that did, you rated it, it was rated one to five. So those students that chose five was what I was going to concentrate on when I came back to school for the individual counseling. And that's where I got my caseload at the beginning of the year, so they would get that individual. Also, this survey helped with us to identify who would be referred to our MTSS team as well, which is our tier one, two, and three students. So, any questions?
Do the students that are at home, learning at home, do they have a way that they can contact you if?
They do. They can contact me through email. Or, you know, I check in with them through email. I give them phone calls sometimes during the week if I know that it's somebody that I've seen a lot. But also, this Google Classroom is available to any of the kids online at all times. So if they're getting the lessons at school, the kids at home are still getting the lessons online. So it's a way to keep everybody.
I worry about the kids that are home, sometimes in abusive situations, and no way to.
And we have that program, the gaggle program within our school that alerts us if anybody, you know, is doing anything appropriate. So when we get alerted as counselors or principals, we have to contact that student. Well, if they're at home, we can't do that. So we have to contact that parent and make sure that they're safe and supported and have what they need, so.
Thank you.
My name is Tia Wiggins. I have the, you can't see it, it's super purple, but. Yes, that's me. So what I was going to talk, what we do that might be a little different, would love to have a care team, but we, our care team is kind of like our MTSS team because it's all of us. So I kind of made my goals, my program goals, based on our tiered data that we gathered from last year. Sorry, yeah. So that was, if you'll, it's on my third page. But one thing that I wanted to do by the end of this year is making sure that we decrease the tier-three students by ten percent because our data shows that we have, well, we just started implementing MTSS, which is, we're kind of giving more support. Like eighty percent of the population should be in our tier-one services. Tier-two should be like fifteen to eighteen percent. And then tier-three is that five to eight percent. So at our school, we have twelve percent in tier-three. So those are just getting those really individualized tier-three, more intensive interventions. And I normally deal with, you know, tier-two, tier-three. A lot of tier-one is just like, you know, guidance-type things that I give to everyone. But we're already doing that with the data that we have now. And similar to Ian and Barb, I am making, well, we're doing a lot of phone calls, and that really helps to, you know, get down our, our numbers in the tier-three and just providing those extra interventions. So for me, that would be like, you know, the small groups and the individuals, stuff like that. So then for the academic referrals, we had eighty referrals last year. So that means we had eighty kids in our MTSS process. And those are academic and behavior referrals. So my goal, number two, really addresses that. And that is just to decrease that from about five to ten percent. So right now, we're already meeting that goal because we are at fifty-two referrals, but we have half the population. So we are really, like, my program is really data-driven by MTSS. And we, we log everything through referrals that we do. Like, we have a Google Doc. And then I also manage my time based on my service log. So I, I also do a referral process. That's teachers, parents, MTSS referrals that I get, self-referrals. I have a little thing, a little note that they can contact me. And I have a mailbox, so anytime that they need something. I also get a lot of parent referrals and then teacher referrals. So with the Plan C kids too, we also have a coordinator who's on our MTSS team that will reach out if, you know, a student is trouble, having trouble at home. So we are really trying to keep the Plan C students involved. It is a lot harder because we have to reach out to parents. And sometimes we can't get parents. But we're doing a lot of it. And then last is, me and Neil probably are similar in this, but my service log really helps to identify what I'm seeing when I see an individual kid. So like, most of the things that I am seeing for kids, in kids right now are anxiety, they need emotional support, coping skills, and problem solving. So that's what I do with my K-5 curriculum. I just make sure that I am addressing those issues and those. I just make sure that I am addressing those issues and those concerns in my guidance lessons. So it is very individualized K5. Like kindergarten, I do kind of the same thing, one, first and second, and then third through fifth. Fifth kind of has their own curriculum too, so... Any questions? I know it was a lot. A lot of numbers.
So I made out a handout. I think it would be easier to follow along, which I'm going to share with y'all today.
Thank you.
Thank you, Neil.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
Good job.
So the key to any great and longstanding edifice is building a solid foundation. Turnaround USA, develop the pyramid that you see in front of you, and it's an evidence-based skills and mindset proven by research to predict academic success. Similar to Maslow's hierarchy of needs, this framework demonstrates key foundational elements children need to be academically successful. Additional research in the field of neurobiology demonstrates key foundational elements children need to be successful in life and have a fulfilling life. Two years ago, Mr. Sale shared this hierarchy of social emotional needs with Ms. Davis, who in turn shared it with me. At that time, my school counseling program was focused primarily on developing a growth mindset, and if you look at this pyramid, you will see that growth mindset is one of the higher-tier foundational needs. My research in growth mindset led me to, growth mindset is composed of the development of perseverance and resilience within an individual, and that led me to attending a Reconnect for Resilience training with Resources for Resilience out of Asheville. This training led me to further research, Andy and Phalletti's Adverse Childhood Experiences Study, Dr. Nadine Burke Harris's The Deepest Well, Dr. Basil van der Kolk's The Body Keeps the Score, Dr. Bruce Perry's The Boyhood Raised as a Child. What happened is I got a whole lot of research and dove really deep into what it means to develop resiliency and how to do that. So I've begun to primarily focus on developing resilience and attachment within my students. Children are said to be naturally resilient, but that's actually a misnomer. We're not born resilient. We learn resilience from our primary and secondary caregivers. It's through attachments and connection that we learn how to develop our resilience. And we, as educators and school staff members, we have an excellent opportunity to develop connections with children and to help them develop resilience within ourselves. And we do this not only with our lesson plans, but also how we conduct ourselves, the examples that we set, and how we interact with our students and our coworkers and our parents. So I obtained my certificate to be a resiliency educator with, through Resources for Resilience. My comprehensive school counseling program is focused primarily on teaching resiliency through guidance lessons, individual counseling sessions, and group counseling sessions. I focus on developing connections with my students, my parents, and my coworkers. In individual counseling, I use two different treatment modalities. I use child-centered, non-directive play therapy, along with somatic experiencing. Somatic experiencing is learning how to mitigate the effects of stress and trauma through noticing positive and neutral neural sensations within our body. What we learn how to do is we learn how to speak to our stress response system, and specifically our amygdala, through noticing sensations in our body. When we can do this, we're able, we are able to overcome the effects of trauma and stress, and this is a skill that we can practice and carry on through our lifetime. Learning how to overcome that creates success and fulfillment in our lives. We pass traumatic experiences and historical trauma from one generation to the next. It's not only through our actions and our culture, but we actually pass it through our DNA. So we, as a society, if we start going back in time and looking at how trauma has impacted us, we can start with the Middle Ages, and I find it interesting how the Black Plague affected humanity during, during the Dark Ages, and what a traumatic experience that was for all of, for humanity. We almost reached the point of extinction, and here we are with COVID-19, another traumatic experience, which all of us are feeling. So I'm really focused on teaching resilience to my students. We can mitigate the effects of trauma and stress through learning neurobiological sensation or sensing in tools. So my goals for this year, timeframes have changed because we are still learning how to use and implement the MTSS model. Original goals started off with October, all Plan B children would be screened using MTSS tools, the universal screening tool, and we're going to use what's called the, oh, Student Resilience Scale, or something else that goes along with that. But we're, we're developing and we're going to be implementing and using this universal screener and screen all of our students. This is a system that will be used by everybody at Swain West Elementary School. All of our teachers and our teacher assistants will be trained on how to use these tools. And by April of this year, before we reach our standardized testing, however that's going to look, we will collect the data from this and identify, and identify all of the tiers which our students are. The primary goal is to reduce the number of tier three students by 10% by the end of this year. Goal two, goal number two is to provide social emotional wellness services to all students through guidance lessons, individual and group counseling sessions to identified students. Guidance lessons will be provided to all students during their special schedule. It will be delivered to kindergarten through fifth grade. Lessons are 30 minutes in length. The theme for the, each of the lesson plans are the same for kindergarten through fifth grade, but they're delivered in a developmentally appropriate manner. Tell me I had three minutes, got to talk fast.
That's okay.
So you're flipping your lid, you're stressed out.
Can you, will you explain that, Neil?
So...
To me, this is one of the most amazing demonstrations I've ever seen about how stress can affect individuals, and especially students, and, and it may not even be the, the trigger that causes that to happen really might not be the trigger, it could be related to something else. But anyway, explain that, because I love this.
Thank you for asking that, because this is something that is really important for me. So Dr. Dan Sieg will devote what we call the Hand-Brain Model. And if you take your hand, and you take your fingers, and you wrap it around your thumb such as this, this is a demonstration or an example of the brain. And this part right here will be your brain stem, or as Dr. Sieg calls it, your sensory brain. All of the information for our five senses come in through our central nervous system, up through our brain stem, into this region of our brain, then it reaches what's called the emotional brain. And this is what you hear as called the lizard brain or reptilian brain. It's our first part of our brain that is developed and formed, and it's the oldest part of our brain. So it's our fight and flight center, what I also call the stress response center. If anything happened, if somebody was to drop a book right now, and there would be a loud boom, of course, all of us would hear that. We get the sensation through our sensory brain, it comes up into our emotional brain, and your thumb represents the amygdala. And your amygdala is, is like your smoke detector, all right? The amygdala sorts all the information that our five senses receives, and it's filtering through this to see if anything represents any kind of a danger to the body. The brain's number one purpose is simply to ensure the body's survival. So when that book drops and we hear that slam, sound waves hit our ears, the stimuli goes up through our brain stem, into our emotional brain or our lizard brain, and hits the amygdala. The amygdala decides what's going to happen at that time, and we're going to respond in one of three ways. If the amygdala gets triggered, we're either going to fight, fight, or freeze. And freeze can look like two different, three different things, actually. You can literally freeze up, you can submit, and we see submitting students when a, a student is just, you see this slump position, and you can literally lead the child anywhere you want. They're too afraid to do anything other than to lead, or the collapse is just, you know, they fall out. Sometimes we will notice this with children who have their heads down on their desk, hoodies over their head, and they have shut, shut everything out. When the amygdala gets triggered, it, it kicks the thinking brain offline, our rational brain, all cognitive thought stops. We're not able to learn, we're not able to remember anything, executive functions go out the door. When you're, Dr. Nadine Burke Harris uses the example of a bear, you're walking down Deep Creek, and a bear comes out on the trail, and it growls at you, the amygdala is going to signal the thinking brain, go, you know, you don't need to think about what you're going to get for dinner tonight. You're going to run, fight, or freeze. All right? And it's not until the amygdala receives a signal that all is clear, that the thinking brain is able to come back online. This is why self-regulation is so important. It's not only important for our students, but it's important for all of us who work in the education field as well. Reconnect for Resilience has went through and offered training to all of, all the staff who want to attend, and anyone who hasn't attended. Y'all haven't attended, I highly recommend it, and it's something I really push for. But here is where the, the neurobiological sensing in tools come in. We learn how to speak to our body, we learn how to speak to the sensory brain to get the amygdala to calm down so that thinking brain can come back online. When our students sit down to take an EOG or EOC, that can be a traumatizing experience for those children, depending upon how they take tests and their experiences in the past. That alone is enough for the amygdala to perceive a threat and kick the thinking brain offline. And when that happens, memory, cognitive functions go out the door. So if I can teach our students, and if I can teach our teachers and teacher assistants how to teach the students how to develop self-regulation skills, then hopefully, they'll be able to remember those skills to calm that central nervous system down, tell the amygdala that all is clear, and bring the thinking brain back online. So that's the focus of, of my guidance lessons and individual and group counseling sessions. That's what I'm going to be focusing on with the children. We can use play therapy for them to get to the nuts and bolts of the, the issue that they're trying to face. And it's through teaching a somatic experiencing, or having a somatic experience with them, that I can help them, we have something called neuroplasticity, and it's the, it's the brain's ability to relearn how to respond to stimulus, and it's, our brain is so incredible. So I can, I can, through neuroplasticity, I can teach the kids how to rewire their brain on how to, how to calm that, that amygdala down and bring that thinking brain back online. And that's a skill they can carry throughout their lifetime, and that's sort, that is sort of the heart and soul of what social emotional learning is. And at the elementary school, Sierra and I, we have this blessed opportunity to, to really create a solid foundation for our students using some of these skills and some of these things that we, that we're hopefully doing with our comprehensive school counseling plan. Thank you for that segue.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any questions? And my thinking brain goes back online.
Thank you.
Any questions or thoughts for, for any of these folks?
I, I just want to say, you know, obviously, how impressive, how impressed I was in, in looking at these plans and, and realizing how connected you all are within our system. It's not like the elementary school and the elementary school and the middle school. You know, you all are just working together, and you can, you can definitely see how the building blocks are there, and how the elementary schools are starting that foundation in kindergarten and working their way up. It's just, it's, never ceases to amaze me, the things that take place within a public school system that are not reading, writing, and arithmetic, you know, all the other services that are there for our students to help them be successful. So thank you, thank you to each of you for putting together the plan and for sharing that with us and for, for what you're doing.
Anything else?
Anybody else?
Thank you, folks, very much. Appreciate you a lot. Thank you, Ian. And you mentioned down to kindergarten, 50% of what they do at the pre-K is teaching the students to deal with these very issues. They spend a good amount of time teaching them self-regulation and awareness of themselves. Tricia and her team have been trained in that, and it's, it's not unusual to hear the, the students talk to themselves and, and talk about their own self-awareness, which is going to pay dividends in their lives on down the road. We have some personnel issues to look at tonight, unless there's anything else that y'all want to discuss. Does anyone see a need to move to closed session for personnel or for anything else?
I do not.
Okay, so I'll bring my recommendations to you, okay? I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ Kelly Phelps as temporary EC teacher at Swain East Elementary pending her background check.
And why is that, just temporary?
I don't have an answer for that, Lambert. I'm sorry. If, if Brandon is...
No, no, that's okay. That's fine. That's fine.
I, I don't remember, and then I, I mean, I think I do, but I'm afraid to say something because I'm afraid I'll say it wrong.
That's, that's all right.
I can tell you that the numbers of EC students, what we would say, students with an IEP, is pretty high at, at East Elementary. And in order for all of those IEPs to be served, Brandon has determined that we need some additional help. And Kelly became available for us, and in order to, to make those pieces come together, and I think I remember the answer now, it's because Ashley left.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
And so what Brandon was trying to do was to, to help us make it through the end of the school year and then higher, and he found out that we just really couldn't do that and do, do service for the students. And so Kelly came along and we brought her on. That's why. So it's just a one-year position, of course, it'll be looked at again.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay? So I don't, did we ever get a vote on that?
No, 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 no. So I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to employ Kelly Phelps in that capacity.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? All in favor, raise your hand, and that was unanimous.
I recommend that the Swain County Board of Education employ Samantha Flanagan as teacher assistant at Swain East Elementary pending background check. If I'm not mistaken, this is one of the reading assistant positions that the county has allotted for us that'll help us with our, our reading instruction.
Do I have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Any further discussion or questions? All in favor, raise your hand, please, and that was unanimous.
And Tommy Dills just texted me and said, that's exactly why we hired Kelly.
Thanks, Tommy.
Not so bad, huh? I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ Alyssa Holbert as teaching assistant at Swain West Elementary pending background check. This is also a reading assistant position.
Perfect. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
A second?
Second.
Any further questions or discussions? All in favor, raise your hand, and that was unanimous. And that was unanimous.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ Sandra Rowe as teacher assistant at Swain West Elementary pending background check. Again, a reading assistant.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any further questions or discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. And that was unanimous.
For those of you who have good memories, and I know that, that Lambert has a memory unlike anyone out of my life.
He does.
He remembers every mistake I've ever made.
Something I made.
Right now, we put three reading assistants at West and two at East, and there were two reasons for that. West has a higher population right now. And the other reason is there was a person at East who we can pull in to help with this as well who was already on staff as an assistant. So, really, in a lot of ways, it's equal per, per the student count.
Just make sure that stays that way.
It will. I promise you that. It will. The fifth one there is I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ Taylor Cochran as EC after-school tutor effective November nineteenth, twenty twenty. Taylor, if I'm not mistaken, is currently, uh, what we used to call a student teacher. I can't remember what we call him now.
Intern.
An intern. And Brandon has been able to secure funding for EC tutoring. And there will be more assistance for EC students that has come through that funding and through some additional now that's come through the CARES Act.
Wonderful. So, do I have a motion?
Second.
Any further questions or discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. And that was unanimous.
And I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ Daryl Laney as bus driver effective November thirteenth, twenty twenty. And if there's anybody else out there who wants to be a bus driver, we've got slots.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any further questions or discussions? All in favor, raise your hand. And that was unanimous.
Ms. Burns, if I could have just a moment to go along with some of the things that we just did.
Certainly.
I, I just want to remind anyone who is watching and remind all of you, and hopefully if, if the newspaper is paying attention to this tonight, I want to remind everyone that a lot of these positions that we've hired this time and the last time are because the, the county commissioners have seen what we're doing in the educational system, and they have really gone to bat for us with some substantial funding. And I spoke with Kevin King, who's the county manager, this morning. I mean, I had been asking him to give us some numbers. Most people in the county will remember that about two years ago, we asked for them to pass a half-cent sales tax. And the purpose of that was to go towards capital needs in the county. Since that time, the, the half-cent sales tax has raised over four hundred and twelve thousand dollars in Swain County. And, and with the way that tourism is going right now, I, I can see us doing that again, alright? Now, I asked Kevin, because Ms. Burns and others have asked for, for the information. I asked him, "So, what have we done with that money?" Because the county needs to know that we're being responsible and that everyone else is being responsible. And he said that he has used about two-thirds of that, just, just over two hundred and ninety thousand dollars, to bridge funding towards debt service. And what he means by that is whenever we got the grant from the state to build the addition at the high school, that came out of lottery proceeds, that four million dollars or whatever it was. But because Swain County got that, we lost our yearly capital lottery allotment.
Which was about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
It's about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars or so. That's exactly right, okay? And all of that money that had been coming from the lottery capital allotment was being used to pay for debt service, alright? Until some of those initial old debt payments roll off, and the first one will be in two thousand twenty-two. He and I had a conversation, and we've agreed that we need to help pay for that until we can either have that roll off or that lottery money can come back to pay for debt service. So, for this last year, he needed, he had to use about two hundred and ninety thousand dollars to do that. Next year, it won't be as much, okay? And then the other, a hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars, he's used to help us finish out the multipurpose building, which cost a little more than we had anticipated. And he's also using that to help pay for HVAC's, HVAC system upgrades, including some of those that are gonna be coming out at the middle school in the next year, because we've got to do some serious work there. Now, if you recall, our performance contracting is to help in some of those areas, but there's no way that we could fund all of those HVAC needs through just that performance contract, okay? So, I bring all of that to your attention. You may or you may not remember all those numbers. But I bring that to your attention to let you know that the commissioners are really helping us. Kevin is really trying to help us. I'm not even bringing to the table all of the other areas that I've gone to him in the past year, and, and he said, "Just, just send me the bill. Just send me the bill." So, I'm very appreciative of that.
Absolutely.
And the other piece of that that is substantial to me is that any money that comes from tax revenue, Article forty-two, Article forty-six, I can't remember all the other articles, if there is any tax revenue left over, he puts that into a capital fund that's like a fund balance for the school system. And right now, because of all of the savings that everyone has been able to accrue, we have over seven hundred thousand dollars sitting in that fund balance. And why, why is that just sitting there and we're not using it? Because if something catastrophic happens, we've gotta be able to cover that somehow. If we were to, and I don't even wanna, I don't even wanna talk about what kind of catastrophic things could happen. I'll give you an example. Whenever they were putting curb in up at the high school and they pushed a pin down through the, the ground and hit a gas line, that could've been catastrophic.
Yes.
Or whenever they were drilling, they were, they were boring up at West Elementary to put in our new propane lines to run our new boilers, and they hit the water line and split it in half, you know? There's all kinds of things that can happen. So, I, I believe with all that I am that our county is really supporting us very well. And I am so grateful for the relationship that I have with the commissioners and also with Kevin King. I called him last week, and he was on vacation. And he stopped and he talked to me and we worked some issues out. I just, I appreciate all of them. I just wanted y'all to hear that and everybody else, okay?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Sale, for bringing all that to our attention. Good stuff.
The only other things that, that I have for us tonight is just please remember that our next full meeting is scheduled at this point for November the fourteenth. It is possible, um, December the fourteenth, thank you. It is possible that we will need to have another meeting between now and then with our new board members, because we've got some information that we need to share about scheduling and things like that. And I believe that it's more appropriate, not that I don't want you all in on the decision-making, but the decisions that are made will impact their tenure.
Absolutely.
And I think that that's the way it ought to operate. And I also wanna remind Jerry and Travis that on November the ninth, there's training that afternoon. I'm, I'm stuck in November, forgive me, December the ninth. There's training. I'll send you all an email about that. Chris Campbell or, or one of his helpers, you know, Santa and his helpers, will come over. Will come over, and they're gonna talk about Title IX and have our board ethics training.
What time does that start? Do you remember?
The Title IX starts at one and runs till four. And then the board ethics training and responsibility starts at four and runs to six. And then I'll feed you all dinner after that if you wanna stay and eat. We'll have a hot dog and some chips or something, okay? And I know, Ken, that you're gonna be out of town. Risa has some training that you can attend online, or you can do something else.
Did you send anything about that?
I think I did.
I think you did, too. I just haven't had a chance to look at it.
I, I, well, I don't know why. You're like the county attorney for Western North Carolina.
Yeah, really.
And we're proud of you and thankful for you. Thank you. Now, the only other thing that's left on the agenda are some of the pieces that I've been dreading for about six months. Is there anything else that y'all wanna cover? Lambert and Melly, this is your last night with us after twelve years. I don't know what you're gonna do with your time. But congratulations to you. Lambert, how many years were you an educator?
Thirty-two.
So, you've been a part of Swain County Schools for forty-four years.
And twelve years before that.
That's right.
Yeah.
Fifty-six years. You've been a part of Swain County Schools.
Almost as long as Jerry.
Almost as long as I've been alive, is what I was gonna say.
But he's catching up right here.
So, Lambert, I have something that I wanna give to you. There is no way that we can say thank you enough. I mean, personally, you're my brother, and you have been my, you have been the mentor in my life, and I appreciate that. But for our children, you've meant so much. So, I wanna give this to you. But there's something else that I wanna give to you as well. I found a painting that I want you to have. It's by my favorite artist. That's Norman Rockwell. And let me tell you the reason that I want to give this to you. I remember at East Elementary when you used to sit with students and you would read to them after lunch. They thought you were so cool because you're the only person that would go in there and read a book with foul language in it and could get away with it. That's one of the reasons. I also imagine that you probably went to a school that looked like that because you're so old. But this kid is the one that stood out to me for you. Because Lambert has always been the administrator and the educator who cared for the child that nobody else cared for. I remember at, at Whittier, when they had ice cream. No child would go without ice cream. He would buy ice cream for everybody. I remember at East Elementary, when it came time for Christmas, no child would without, without a Christmas present. And that's because Lambert cares about these, but he cared about this one. I could tell you story after story after story about Lambert and how he rescued children, and sometimes even rescued staff. You are invaluable to our school system, and you are invaluable to me. So, thank you, Lambert. Take this and put it somewhere where you can look at it regularly. You wanna turn and show it to the camera? This is Lambert. So, thank you, Lambert. I wish we could have had a household for both of you.
That's okay. We, it's twenty-twenty.
Lambert, do you want to say anything?
I'm, I'm good, thank you.
Okay. I couldn't say anything either at this point. And, and Melly? You asked me to find something out, and I could.
That's okay.
What I know is that there have not been a lot of female representatives on the school board. You, I'm as a board, Carrie Adams. Was she in the board?
Wilson Biggs.
Wilson Biggs.
And Judy Reviss.
Okay, Judy Reviss. That's right, Judy Reviss. But if you think about all of the board members that have, have come through Swain County, that's a small percentage. And you've risen because of the respect of, of these, these other people to the point of chair. And you have been incredibly important to me as a brand-new superintendent. I have enjoyed being able to call you. Can't say I've always enjoyed when you call me at seven o'clock in the morning.
So am I, Monica. Call Mark. Hey, Mark.
She's a morning person. She gets to take care of it. I'm a night person, so I call her at eight. But we, we really appreciate you, and I have a painting for you as well. Another Norman Rockwell. And, and the reason that I've chosen this one is because Melly, though I don't like the rest of you, but Melly cares about the family. First of all, Mary, Melly loves her family. And I'm pretty sure that one of the reasons that Melly became a board member was because she wanted to make sure that her girls were having the very best education they could get, along with everyone else. One of the things that Melly said to me whenever we were interviewing was she asked me what was important to me, and I said that every child learns. Every child manages. So, in this picture, Melly, there is one child that's important and is the most important thing to his family. And to me, that's you. You helped us take care of every single child, and I appreciate that so much. So, I'll show that to color it, and we'll give it to you. Melly, is there anything that you want to say to me?
Well, if I can. You know, twelve years has, um, there have been moments when it's felt extremely long. But for the most part, it's, it's gone by quickly. And I, I have to say that my experience on the board, for the most part, has been very positive. I have come to a place of deep, deep, deep respect for each of my boardmates. It's, it's been a journey and a process of learning and growing together. And I appreciate each one of you for what you bring, and for those of you remaining for what you'll continue to bring to our county and to our students. I think the most interesting part of the whole process for me throughout all of this is the depth of knowledge that I have gained about what goes into a school. You know, you come through a school system as a student, and you, you see it from that point of view. You go through the school system as a parent, and you see it from that point of view. And not that I could ever sit here and say that I have the point of view of an educator or an administrator or any staff person that exists within a school system. I do feel like I have learned so many things about all the intricacies that are the Swain County School System. And the thing that stands out to me the most in every situation, whether it's been a wonderful situation that we've celebrated or a difficult situation that we've tried to navigate our way through, what has just repeated itself over and over and over again is that every person employed within our Swain County School System is here to serve children. They really are here to try to meet the needs of that individual child, however that, however that plays out. And so for that, I will be forever grateful. I will, I have shared a little bit with Kim. There will be a part of me that will really miss not having that hands-on involvement. But I believe that, I, you know, I just believe that timing is important. And when I ran and was first elected, my, my commitment was to serve for two terms because I felt like two terms was an appropriate amount of time. And then different folks reached out to me and asked me to run again, so I did. But I, I just believe that, you know, other people now have an opportunity to, to bring in their thoughts and their input and, and, and bring in differing views and learn and help our system continue to grow. So, I will forever be grateful for the experience. I will forever be grateful for the support of our community, for our system, and for the things that are taking place within, within the Swain County Schools. And I have said this, I think, in, in several conversations over the last little bit, but I think it's important for me to say it publicly. Obviously, since March of twenty twenty, we have found ourselves in, in such uncharted waters and circumstances that we've all said could change at the drop of a hat. And I truly, truly, truly cannot imagine having anyone else lead our system but you, Mr. Sale. You have done it with such grace and such dignity and with such commitment to, to the students and the staff and our community. So, we're very, very fortunate, and I thank you and appreciate everything that you've done.
It's been an honor, a privilege, and a challenge. But having all of you to work with has made it successful and sometimes fun.
Most of the time.
Yes.
A lot of the time.
So, thanks to all of you as well.
Thank you.
That's all that I have on the agenda tonight, unless you guys wanna stay longer.
Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
We need a second, but that doesn't matter.
No, I think I made it myself.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, Joe.